I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get approval of the dirt up? This man in there, I would like to, um, they promote the, um, changes to county for dispatch services under my report, please. And we need to add an executive session regarding sixteen dash one dash four oh five, um, personnel and contracts.
Mayor, make a motion and we approve it as a amendment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Can I get the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session on the Monday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Any nominations or recognition? Um, certificates of recognition, we do have two. Um, the first, um, is not available this evening. Uh, Thomas and Becca Curly for supporting Newcastle through the purchase of Donna's Diner. Uh, we will get their certificate mailed off to them. Um, the second is for Archie and Sharon Cowenner for their work on the Senior Center flower beds. Are they here?
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
If anybody wants to work in the dirt, come, come see me.
Citizens Business and Writing, um, number one, we have Tanya Christensen with three different catering permits. The first one, um, Captain Bottle has been chosen to cater for the Weston County Hospital Christmas party this year. This event will be held at the Weston County Fairgrounds Event Center at twenty-four Fairgrounds Road in Newcastle, Wyoming, on the date of November twelfth. We would like to request a catering permit for this event beginning nine AM on the twelfth of November and ending at nine AM on the fifteenth of November. Uh, we thank you for your consideration. Um, their sum of twenty dollars has been paid by Tanya Christensen doing business as Captain Bottle. We have a motion for this license for catering permit for the term of one day only, beginning at nine AM on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, to nine AM November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I made a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The second request is as well from Captain Bottle has been chosen to cater for a benefit for Hart Rhodes, none for cost. This event will be held at the Weston County Fairgrounds Event Center at twenty-four Fairgrounds Road in Newcastle on the date of November nineteenth. Um, they would like to request a catering permit for the event beginning at nine AM on the nineteenth of November and ending at nine AM on the twentieth, beginning of March. The, um, sum as well of twenty dollars has been paid by Tanya Christensen doing business as Captain Bottle. This license for catering permit is for the sum of one day only, beginning at nine AM November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two to nine AM November twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the third one as well is, um, Captain Bottle with chosen to cater festival of trees. This will, this event is going to be held at the Senior Center at six two seven Pine Street in Newcastle on December second. They are requesting a catering permit beginning at nine AM on the second of December and ending at nine AM on the third of December. The sum of twenty dollars has been paid by Tanya Christensen doing business as Captain Bottle of the city of Newcastle. The license and catering permit is for the term of one day, beginning at nine AM December second, two thousand twenty-two to nine AM December third, two thousand twenty-two.
Mayor, make a motion and we approve the twenty-four hour catering permit for Captain Bottle on December second, starting at nine AM, but then December third, at nine AM.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business and Writing, number two, Pinnacle Bank, a depository of public funds. To whom it may concern pursuant to requirements of Wyoming Statute nine dash four dash eight one eight, formal application is made by Pinnacle Bank Wyoming, a corporation organized and existing under the laws of Wyoming and having its office and principal place of business in the city of Newcastle and the county of Weston and the state of Wyoming to be designated a depository for public funds. Pinnacle Bank Wyoming agrees to furnish the securities as provided fourth in section nine dash four dash eight two one to cover public funds as may be deposited by the city of Newcastle or capital of Wyoming. Furthermore, Pinnacle Bank Wyoming agrees to comply to Wyoming Statute nine dash four dash eight oh six by order of the Board of Directors, Pinnacle Bank Wyoming. We have a motion to continue using Pinnacle Bank as our depository of public funds.
Mayor, make a motion and we approve, um, Pinnacle Bank as a depository of public funds.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business Verbal, Newcastle Chamber.
Um, the first thing that we have is our special events, once again, for the lighted parade on Saturday, December third. Um, this year, Megan's going to run the lighted parade. I'm doing a Santa's workshop at the old Wright-Pinner's building where we're going to dump Santa off, so we'll have a place for the kids to go and the streets to be blocked off. We'll start at the, um, parking lot at the high school, run down Cheyenne Street, up Stampede, by Maverick Turn, go down Main, stop at the courthouse.
Was there sections of Main Street that you ever wanted blocked off for this event, or?
Yes, we did, we put, that we're going to have to have it blocked off so that the parades can go through and go stuff on from the high school, Stampede, to Main Street. The, like we have in the past, it's the same route.
But, but it's not blocked off from high school to way to town, though. Typically, it's just either from railroad to Seneca or?
You can do that, because when we come out there, we have a, an officer out there. Usually, I don't know where that stands either. We're going to have an officer come to the parade on this side, but not, most people don't.
Yeah, just so that the public works, people know where to bring the barricades. You know, from the one, the first day, and it was from Stampede all the way up. And obviously, that's going to be the whole Main Street. Typically, it's up north or east of the railroad tracks.
Yeah, it's just that Stampede, we don't want any kids out there, especially if it's on candy. We don't want the kids, um, coming in the road. We can't get kids in the road.
So, did they do from Sumner to railroad last time, or? Did barricades were up by Sumner?
What are you whispering about?
Pardon?
What are you whispering about?
Another issue?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Is that good with you guys?
Do you want this, or do you want me to hand it to her? About this?
We need a motion to approve the current?
Okay, perfect.
They're just telling us about the event. Okay, well, I'm looking forward to it, as usual.
It's an event, you guys do it for the light parade and the kids coming in from Santa in.
Yeah, well, that's what's changed this year. Last year, we had it stopped at TNA, well, the old TNA, remember? And we had the workshop there. She's not going to be available this year, so I did, um, get permission from the folks at the old Wright-Pinner's because he's cleaned all that out, and we're just going to do it there this year. So it's at the other end of the block, this year, the other end of the block. Someone for the kids to go.
Right.
So, the other issue was the hours for Barbie?
Yes.
You guys wanted to discuss that?
Yes, wait on, what are the hours that, that you guys are there? Like, what days, whatever?
So she's there three days a week. We also put up a security system at the chamber, so we can monitor how many folks come and go at the chamber. And Barbie also put and made up bags that are left outside, um, like items in and people in. It took like a, in the summer to see, so in a week's time, maybe ten people stopped to do, and I actually let her tell you, because we did do the, the numbers on what was coming and going there. When she's not there, she sits there and does nothing. When she's out on the street, and Anna Salz said, why don't you go out on the street more and socialize and be with people in the coffee and do around, so she did do that. And when she did do that, she brought up revenue of our membership drive up to twenty-one thousand dollars when she's out on the street. When she's sitting in the office in the last four years, membership has never been that high, ever. We feel like that you guys are asking for somebody in the office and somebody out of the office. It doesn't work that way. If you want her to sit in the office three days, four days a week, she's not being productive. If she's out talking to folks in the community and we're getting stuff together, we are. We've lost funding from you, we've lost funding from the Weston County Travel Commission, and we've lost funding from the county commissioners. And I guess our biggest thing when we had our meeting was that we are viable for the community. The stuff that the chamber does is events which they really are. Our Newcastle Area Chamber of Commerce mission is to provide resources for a long-range growth by connecting with local governments to encourage a vital economic and by creating a business-ready environment. We are in such a small community that the events that we put on, we feel like are opening the doors to the community to participate, to come out and participate. And we've had this discussion numerous times, but by saying not funding us or not supporting in a monetary way, I know there's a lot of money out there between the Weston County Travel Commission, the City Council, and the county commissioners. But the action is, if it's not supported, it won't survive. Question being, do you as an entity, or whatever you represent, support the community services, because if you do, we would appreciate the funding. If you don't, we understand you're not going to fund us. We can't be viable, because there's a lot of stuff that comes out of our board members' pockets just to make these events go on, because we don't have the funding to do that. We have twenty-one thousand dollars, or Barbie? How much?
Thirty.
Thirty, we have thirty thousand dollars, and we pay her to do, just to bring in what we have, and the money that we do have is not going anywhere to do the events that we're doing.
So we do have her in the chamber three days a week for at least four hours a day. That is posted regularly, um, via social media. Um, her number is posted everywhere, people can reach out to her. So, um, we're just kind of asking for reconsideration in regards to the stipulation on the funding we receive, um, based off of her hours put inside of the actual chamber office.
So, I guess one of the things that I'm curious about, like, you, you get a subsidy from the city, so, I mean, if she's doing so much good work away from the chamber office itself, like, maybe provide us with some documentation so that we can see how those public funds are being spent? Like, let us know what events she's attending, how long she's there, what kind of support she's drumming up. I mean, that's, that's the issue, is we, we're just under the impression, or we've heard, um, that, you know, Barbie isn't at the chamber, and there's been people who have tried to contact the chamber, and they, they didn't get ahold of anybody. So we're just wondering if, you know, we're providing you guys with a subsidy, like, what the public is getting for their money. And we love your events, don't get me wrong, I go, I attend all your events.
Right.
I bring my kids.
Uh-huh.
Um, we like what you do, I like what you do.
Appreciate it.
But, we just, uh, you know, you're, you, you ask for public, and that was something else that we also brought to your attention, was that, you know, uh, a lot of chambers across the state generate their own revenue, right? So, you're getting public funds through us, and you say you can't do it without, right? So we just want to know what you got going.
Okay, so we're a small community, and so our public funds are actually just from you guys or our membership. So when we do put on an event, of course, it comes out of that. But we have to maintain that building down there, we have to maintain, um, all of our literature, the stuff that we write out, the brochures that we put out, the bags that we bought, all the stuff that we do, we pay Barbie a salary, which is not much, in order for us to maintain that and do that in our baking hours, our bucks to get going, or to do, but the phone itself is to her fault. Barbie, you should come up here and talk. The phone itself is to her.
I mean, I called her the other day.
And did you get her?
Um, I think I called her cell phone number, actually.
Yeah, you should have been.
I think I was, and I called you back.
Right.
Um, but one thing I want to say is, I am available to the public if they reach out to me. If you call the chamber and give me a message, I call you back. If you call my cell phone, I'm in a meeting, I call you back, so I will, then, I have hours.
You did fine, Barbie, I got ahold of you.
Great.
You can text me, you can email me. My phone number is blasted everywhere. Um, the problem I have is when I sit in the office for four hours, the one phone call I get is, do you have the phone number to Twenty One Electric? Let me Google that for you. Because these are the calls that I'm getting. If there's an issue and they're trying to get ahold of me, I don't know what else I can do. Maybe I'm at a doctor appointment, and then they'll try and call Santa. We're in a microwave society, and I have a light outside the chamber office. But I am here for this community, and I love the chamber. I love putting on the event, um, but there's nothing I can do outside. And I know from the past, when you had someone in there nine to five, there were profit and loss, which I gave you guys, and I can keep going back. I gave you our best years of profit and loss. Um, it didn't work for you.
For the last five years?
Ten years, going back, the chamber was in the black.
Okay, you want to go back that far, it would look good for us.
The first year, we were in the black, and I'm not tootie my own horn, because it is a board-driven entity, we were in the black. And that speaks a lot, at least to me and my board, and I don't think it speaks to anyone else. And that's where the frustration comes, at least from the chamber. And I hope I didn't overstep.
No, no, you can say whatever's on your mind, this is your time. We've asked, we've, they ask for your hours, this is your point.
If I have my piano here, if a, if a doctor appointment comes up on a Thursday, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be at the chamber Thursday, I'm taking my parents to R. But I will be there Friday.
What days are you on?
My goal is to be there Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then I will pick up another day. Usually, it's a Monday or a Friday.
But if I'm not mistaken, on our security cameras that we did install on those and the traffic that goes by, they're, they're very minimal.
Very minimal, even during the summer hours when I'm there, um, really, we don't get a ton of traffic, at least from what I heard years past. Um, recently, it's just usually someone will stop for a map. Um, it's just, I'm heading to Yellowstone, this is the best way. Um, going to Devil's Tower, I'm on the great route. Um, the traffic in the building itself is very, very slow, even during the summer. Um, the visitor bags we put out, I know help, because I could be in the office all day, and even as soon as I walked out, it sounded like stuff. So, the bags that we provide year-round, I think are great, um, help and also promote our community and our chamber members as well.
Did you happen to bring a bag?
I did not, I didn't bring a bag on that topic. But what's in her bag, it will be a Wyoming travel guide for the year. Um, and then we have our Weston County maps, our city maps. We do include a Black Hills map, um, brush one, and the most popular, um, visitor information. But that's really all that we do put in for South Dakota. Everything else is our Newcastle, let's see, our Newcastle, um, and Miller Museum. And then we have our road tour, we also have a cemetery tour, both in there. Um, and then I highlight our hotels and motels that are members, along with our restaurants that are members, and any other store that would like to give us information, or maybe.
So, can, I called on somebody really quick. Um, Howie, you used to sit the desk in the chamber, and I mean, I, I visited you in there before, just, I mean, like, what was your schedule when you were manning the desk?
Well, that's, I was expected to be there from nine to five, and I honestly, and I've talked to Pam about it. Pam was my resident when I was the, uh, executive director out there. And there's really not a lot for you to be doing there. I mean, Barbie, how much did you increase the membership just from going and seeing the businesses? So it's kind of one of those things where the general public that doesn't understand what the chamber does says, I want you sitting at that desk, I want to feel like I'm getting my money's worth for paying you a salary. So I sit at the desk.
And?
Are you getting money's worth if I'm just sitting there, you know what I mean? So I, I'm definitely on their side, I think it's sad, and I think it's especially sad of Pam, because you know what the chamber does, you know the events. Those events are not planned and made happen sitting behind that desk. You know it, because you never sat behind the desk, and how much work did you do?
I didn't have to sit behind the desk, but I did a lot of work.
That's my point, that's my point.
What about using volunteers, because I know there's a job?
We have a tribe, and Mary is another one. He's come to the office on Monday, that's his day, that's the only day he wants to volunteer.
And we were even thinking of maybe Barry more towards the busy times, um, like he's walking, comes down on Monday.
Let's see, any volunteers that want to come down and participate?
I told him I'd do a little board on Monday, um, and I think we could utilize him a lot during our tours and more busy time.
It's hard to utilize volunteers.
And especially like in morning, like today, I don't think I want him out in our weather we have today to sit at the chamber office, when no one's stopped by. But I don't think anybody gets out this morning from nine to eleven. That urgently needed the chamber, and urgently needed Barry to sit there.
Well, you think it's fair to maybe, like, if you're out at coffee and you're doing stuff like that, scratch something down in a notebook and provide us with a report, with some documentation, to let us know what you're up to?
Um, Barbie went to post office today, and now we should pack it up, I mean, is that what you want from me?
If, if, if you document something, then you did it, right? Then we know that?
Well, yeah, but?
That's not too much effort, I don't think. I have to document everything I do for a wedding.
I guess I feel like I answer to my board, and if my board wants me to do that, but?
I think that's petty.
I think that's?
That's what I, my payment.
You think it's, you think it's petty?
Because I guess we know what she does. To me, just say, oh, I had coffee with?
I can, I can, I'll write down, went and had coffee, went to use the bathroom, went to the post office.
No, she's?
Stop this.
Throw in the bathroom, they're, now that's petty.
I mean, I'll be stupid.
Don't, hang on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, not to you.
I said, I'm being stupid, but I will, I mean, if you want day-to-day?
You want to ask the, you want to ask the council for money, and you want us to give you money, but then you don't want to provide some kind of a documentation to let us know what you're doing?
I don't really provide a documentation, but I feel like there needs to be some professionals.
And then you're being flippant with me, telling me that, that you're going to write down, you went to the bathroom.
Oh, come on, Tyra, I'm only kidding.
May I please ask, um?
I mean, my, I think that Barbie's a factor.
What are you looking for in regards to, like, obviously, you want to know, like, her mannering and that kind of thing, but how, how lengthy of documentation are you looking for?
Um, just when she's doing something that's, uh, specific to the duties that she's performing as a member of you guys' chamber, that, you know, sitting in the office, we can keep track of what she's doing. If she says that that's not the way that she needs to handle it, right? That she needs to go mix with the public, let us know when she goes to coffee and who she talked to and what kind of support she drummed up.
Oh, yeah.
I don't need to know when she goes to the bathroom, I don't need to know all of that other stuff that she wanted us to know.
I agree, that's not appropriate. Um, I can't speak on behalf of the board, but I believe that it is something that we can take to our board to discuss.
Okay, that's fantastic, I appreciate that.
I feel like we do need to know that since Barbie's been there, everything has increased, and she is out there doing stuff, and I think asking her stuff like that makes her feel like, that's why she just left, that she isn't doing enough, or being short-changed. As a board, if we go away as the chamber, along with the things that are happening, I think it was brought to our board and someone who, why, why reinvent the wheel? You're going to get somebody else to try to pick up everything that we do when we close those doors, and it's already in place. I don't see it being a fault that we can't work together as a chamber and as a board, and maybe sit down individually and say, this is what we really want, or outline what you want. But to go that route, even from your city councilman here, none of them said that, that you want an outline? I'll give you an outline from our board of what she does, because she has increased us in a year a hundred percent. I have full respect and full, she does our taxes, she has to pay all the stuff, she has to sit at that board, she has to sit at the H and R block, she does stuff that, behind the scenes, that I think a lot of people don't understand what she does.
So that's fantastic, that you just outlined it, because we don't know any, I didn't know anything about that.
I mean, she has?
I never, I never heard a bit about that. So if you provided an outline and, and explained to us the duties, then it would be easier to grant that subsidy every year.
So, in, in retrospect, you're just looking for a job description of what our current directors do, on a monthly basis?
And if she's making contact with the public, what she's doing, that's it.
The reason that this came up is that there's a lot of, um, members of the public that, you know, make complaints, that no one's ever there, they don't get calls, returns, um, things to that factor. So that is why this is coming up. And when it comes to cutting funds, you guys weren't the only entity that cut funds. It's been a tough year, a long one, for other agencies as well.
So that's how we were getting it, that people were trying to make contact with the chamber, and they weren't able to make contact. So providing a little bit of documentation would kind of assist in us knowing what's going on, that's it.
She daily is on there doing the contact that you're talking about, Facebook, top of the town, Newcastle, for hours on our websites, on our flyers, on the stuff that goes out. She talks to people from other chamber offices for hours to coincide with them for events that are going on that she puts out there. I, I think, we can do that. I, I think we can do that and I'm not going to sit here and just defend her because I know what she does. And as our board, I know what our board does. But for those people that are calling or doing this or doing that, are those the people that come down to our chamber meetings when we ask for them and come and talk to us? Are those the people when we put out there, please join us, please come be on our board? Are those the same people that we beg to open their doors when we do an event? Are those the same people that won't even be part of the chamber, that have businesses in town and represent our community? Or we have a banquet and our own mayor won't even show up to represent us? Are those those people we're talking about? Because if they are, I'm sorry and I'm frustrated because we work our.
I don't know if they, I don't know if those are the people that are in question, but I understand the coin fitting your time to me.
I mean, we have people, right, sitting here on this board and people that have businesses that won't even protect, represent or contribute or help our chamber trying to do something for our town. Those are those people I think you're referring to, not the people that are happy or the people that know we reach back out to them.
Well, I will apologize that I don't attend your banquets, but I have a restaurant that I need to be at. And I am one of the main cooks that's.
I understand that, but let me just say one thing. The reason I said that is because we asked specifically to come when we brought the people down from Washington DC and we had a big banquet and we personally asked them to come down to our small community, all the way from Washington DC. And they wanted a photo with our mayor and you weren't there and we asked you.
I didn't know what you're talking about.
Okay. I'm done. If you guys have any more questions? Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to mayor council member reports, uh, number one Heritage Park project. Um, I know I saw it. There it went. Come on up, Dave. It's on the spot. Um, so we all know the Heritage Park project. And we know that, um, that Hall Brass has been working very diligently on, um, the assessment of that, of the park. And I think they're at the point where they're finished and kind of wanting to see where the city is at on that. Is that correct?
Yep, that's accurate. So the feasibility study, um, was presented to you guys last week, I believe. You might have one. Um, regardless, so, uh, the, the, the study itself was presented to you guys. It would give you some time certainly to kind of digest it. If you have any questions, to go back to the steering committee, uh, we certainly, I certainly would be open to take those questions or concerns, uh, those types of things back to the committee. But also as a member of the steering committee, we would like some, uh, direction, I guess, from the council as to how to proceed, um, and what level we can proceed. One, do you feel that it's a viable project to pursue? Um, and then, uh, secondly, if it is, um, then if it's not asking too much, it would be nice to have, um, some kind of a vote for that, that yes, this is a project worth pursuing. Uh, that gives the committee a little, uh, the additional steam, I guess, to go into the next phase of that, which we're securing funding. Uh, there are several, uh, funding sources that the committee had to discuss. We have also branched out into a financial committee, uh, as, as part of the steering committee for the Heritage Park project. Um, if on the flip side, you guys say we don't feel that this is the project worth pursuing, then, then, then tells us executive committee as well. Um, and we hope certainly that that's not the case. But if you do feel that way, then our financial, uh, branch of the steering committee then could go into and get busy on securing funding, identifying funding, uh, and be able to report back. Uh, I would also request that if, if, again, if the council feels that it is a project worth pursuing, that, um, this time the steering committee, you could get, you could provide, uh, the steering committee with the approval to go forward, um, as the city for some of the, the funding proposals that are out there, whether it be grants, uh, or approaching partners, uh, that type of deal. Uh, if, if you would to give us permission to do that on behalf of the city, uh, that would be appreciated as well. Does that make sense?
Though it's still not a absolute definite that we're going to have a park. It's just an absolute that we want to move forward and look for the funding.
Exactly. Yep. At any given time, I mean, certainly, you know, if the funding doesn't come to fruition, if, uh, um, you know, if the funding source, for example, if a, if a grant was offered up, but the match was more than what you as a council felt comfortable with, of course, uh, you would always have a final say on any of that, approving, uh, any of the, the grants that if we were awarded, uh, you would, you certainly would have a final say and say, yes, we would like to participate in that or no, at this time we can't or we choose not to participate in that particular grant, even though we may or may not have, or we would have been approved for that. Uh, you, it's just something to keep in mind that you guys certainly would have a final say on any of that. And, and also, uh, you know, we do have three members, four actually, that's the, that's in our steering committee from the council as well. So you'd be very informed of any of the funding, uh, or any of the movements that we would be doing going forward. And so I think you're very well represented and we, we thank you for that certainly. Um, but, uh, a vote, uh, to move forward with this project, um, and, and also giving us, uh, the steering committee the ability to seek funding and/or partners, uh, on behalf of the city would be advantageous to the steering committee.
And I think that would be good, you know, on your part to be able to take that group, try to look for those funds. I think this is a good project to do. In my mind, I would support that portion of that too. And you know, and you guys probably already have a pretty good leg up on some funding the way I've been on here too between, some good state representative.
Certainly.
Back into that. So I think we got a, a good start to that.
We feel confident that, uh, you know, we can, we certainly can grab a lion's share of it. I don't know that, uh, we'll be able to, uh, you know, fully fund it. That, uh, that's a big price tag to, to come up with. Um, but, uh, you know, if, if the, if the city feels comfortable with us pursuing that, um, I think that certainly will give some steam back to the steering committee to pursue those, uh, a little, with a little more, uh, vim and vigor certainly. Uh, we have been in touch with, uh, multiple people at the state level and at the district level as well. Randy Hardo was there last, uh, meeting as well. Uh, she is a regional, uh, representative for the business council, um, which would be one of the grants too that we would be seeking as well as others. And so, um, yeah, I think it's, um, of course, I, you know, I'm a little bit biased with the project, but I think it's a, it's a strong project. I think it's one that would, uh, showcase our, our community and, uh, and there's nothing wrong with that. Having, having things to showcase is never a short supply. And so if you have any questions about the feasibility study itself, um, feel free, you know, we can talk about it now. You can certainly, uh, email me or reach out. Um, we, uh, I, I did speak with Matt just today again, um, and he was asking if there was any additional questions about that study. Um, you know, I, I did find it interesting in, within the study, uh, you know, the, uh, the third party from the University of Wyoming, uh, with the, the financials, uh, these, that I thought was, was really interesting of how some, you know, an amenity like that can provide funding back into your community, um, and essentially pay for itself. You're not going to find a lot of things that will do that for you. And so I think as we seek those things out, uh, moving forward as a community, uh, that's a, that's a good thing to have. And so it's a good partner with the University and the Business Council to work with those guys and work hand in hand because, uh, missing that a, a pretty good pulse of what's going on.
You know, it's appropriated, you know, and I have made a motion that we would support this project and, and have the steering committee search out for what grants are available. Obviously not even the city, you know, it is an obligation for money upfront to fund this until we find out what the funding obligations are that they can come up with. So we can look in that, see what matching pieces could be. And it might end up being a pool, um, coverage, but it's not obligating the city as a monetary piece in this, but I think that's steering committee to give them that authority to go look for those grants.
So that's a long motion. So, so you're basically making a motion so that we can provide some kind of sponsorship for the heritage?
Just so it's not monetary that we're, yeah, we're going to fund it. Because that's going to be the biggest thing, you know, obviously the city's not in a position to fund, you know, the amount of this. But, uh, I think these guys got, what I've been hearing, they've got a pretty good start on potential grants. And I think it's good that the, the steering committee kind of pursues those grants and on behalf of the city.
Well, so, uh, I would second that motion if I think I understand what you're saying.
Yep, just given the.
Not financially binding, but.
Given the authority to, on behalf of the city, to venture for the grant process.
And they'll still come to us to see if we want to move forward with that grant. Because that grant could be a loan, it could be a certain percentage.
Understood. I, I've been going to all the steering committee meetings, so I, I know where they're at. So I would, I would second that motion.
We have a, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Mayor Council Member Reports Number Two, Small Business Saturday Proclamation. To you of Newcastle, whereas the government of Newcastle, Wyoming celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are three, 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 79% of the consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community and Small Business Saturday, 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and 66% report that they, that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas 58% of shoppers report they shop online for the small business and 54% reported they, uh, dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas Newcastle, Wyoming supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Pam Walter, Mayor of Newcastle, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim November 26th, 2022 a Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Mayor Council Member Reports Trailer Parking. So there's a lot that has come up with ordinance that just passed, um, in regards to trailer parking. Um, I had the community, the CSO officer asking, she was stopped by someone in the community wanting to know if they have a daily work trailer, if that could stay since our ordinance doesn't state things to that factor. Um, and then I have a list of addresses that the CSO has talked to and they have not, um, made any attempt to move or relocate, um, the recreational vehicles, trailers, and etc. So I guess, um, first thing is, is I think we need to clarify if someone who has a work trailer, it takes us to work with them every day, if that can stay. And I did, um, have, um, Stacy make a copy of a letter that I received today, um, to give to everyone. I know you probably haven't had the chance to read it. Um, it's pretty long. Um, but they would like this to come back to the council. So that more people can attend, even though we've done the pre-readings.
I know this one particular one that we got here is off of rodeo. And then the one that was on Clark that we were having issues with, um, when those got moved, it has cleared up a big safety hazard coming up to those corners and the school buses coming down rodeo. And then also now that those trailers have been moved, the access for the, the garbage truck in the alley has improved. That would, just on rodeo and Clark, what I've been, gotten most of my complaints from, has cleaned up a, a big safety issue that I had most of the complaints on.
Having worked for the city shop and having to deal with snow removal issues and being able to, you know, not have to dodge trailers and campers that are parked here around on some of our snow removal routes, um, I thought it was a positive ordinance to pass. Um, plus I traveled the state for my position. Um, and most people have to pay to store their extra stuff. They're not able in their towns to park it all over the streets and clog up the street that everybody else needs to use in public way. So, um, it's unfortunate that, that people, we, I feel like people around here have been spoiled and able to park their stuff all over the streets, which really takes away the access that everybody else has to that street. Um, and they're upset that they're going to have to find alternate means to store their equipment. But I really feel personally that it was a, it was a necessary thing to increase public safety and allow people to, uh, you know, be able to use the street without ice and snow back and, uh, make it so it's easier for the crew to remove. So I kind of stand by the ordinance. I knew it was going to upset people, but, uh, I, I stand by the ordinance.
You know, the work trailer kind of comes into, you know, I can see that piece of that because when they pull them there, then they're probably gone the next day. And then you have to get into the, what constitutes, and then people are going to take that as another piece of that. But they hook onto the, a trailer that's maybe hooked onto a camper and leave it there as long as it's connected. Could have hooked up. Now is that getting into something they're going to play with? You know, you have to start talking, thinking about how people want to play with things when you give leeways.
And I, I mean, to get around this, there, could we come up with some kind of a permit or some kind of a special use? Something to allow for trailers that people are going to use for their livelihood. I mean, but then again, if you allow people to do something like that, then everybody's going to have a trailer that they use for their livelihood. Um, we just need them out of the way so that we can take care of the public way. And, uh, I mean, I ran into some stuff when I worked at the shop. Uh, trying to blade the streets, get the snow and ice off there. I, I ran into stuff. And if it wasn't there, there wouldn't have been any stuff to run into.
Any other discussion on this? So no changes to the ordinance?
I think it'd be something that we probably need to think on before we start changing, adding to that from what we've got. On how that would affect. I've seen, what I've seen around in some of the locations, I've been told about some of the issues in ones that I live pretty close and I've come pretty darned close to an accident, even looking both ways. Then when you pull out and someone just right there, because you cannot see around the corner. Is improve that visibility to be able to get out on the street.
Have you seen a big difference? Or you have your staff?
Not yet. Darren started removing snow yet. That's when we really see, when we really get, when we'll have an opinion on this. Campers are definitely an issue. Trailers in general are because they're not moved all the time. You have snow and ice filled up in the gutters, which encourages water and ice to lie in around the trailers. Then we're dealing with it in the middle of the road instead of the edge of the road. So give me a couple ones, I can answer that question.
Well, I know if we do look at the work trailers, you know, they are, they probably have an E I N with them to say and they can always produce that if we go around with it.
There'd be different things that I would think about. You know, and potentially changing or modifying them. I think we just get into some hairy issues of trying to modify it for this from here, and then someone's gonna say, well, what about this? What about this? What about this?
So as of right now, the ordinance can stay as it stays, and we can contact the individual friends, the letters, and the ones that the C S O brought to me.
Is there a way that we can maybe try to find some folks that are willing to store these surplus trailers and have those numbers readily available for the public?
I know there's some, somebody was posting some stuff on Facebook.
I'm gonna come into an issue there, you know, storage and all. Before the ordinance went in, I had several of them ask about storing trailers on the city property, dump below the dome, and charging whatever amount. But then you kind of get into competing with private enterprise. If we get the land there and say, yeah, we're gonna store it for, you know, a hundred dollar a year, whatever it might be. But then you're competing with private entity to store something on the public property. But I know there's one there now that, that stored on the, on the property, and that's gonna have to be looked at if we let that happen or we address it. Madam Mayor, concerning that, that is the area we store the snow. Correct, exactly. So we haul all the snow that ain't, we have to jackstrat all through it, then we have to turn around and, but we're not gonna gain anything. Uh, we've lost all our spots for, when we haul snow too. That's our last place. Um, it's our property. We should deal with all the snow there. The state also hauls their snow there as well. We have campers parked on the site. It makes it very difficult to pile snow. Some of that snow doesn't melt till in the May, so it could be blocked in from, through the juror also. So that's the other issue pertaining to that location.
Well, I'll look and see about, um, businesses that have locations and posted. I thought, I'm not sure, um, I, Mr. Board. You've been attending the commissioner meetings. Has the fairgrounds brought up, um, to the commissioners about utilizing the fairgrounds for rental? Cause I know Kara has talked to me about it.
For notice board?
No, for people to bring their campers and whatnot.
That hasn't gotten brought up yet, no.
That's something that she talked to me about. I think she's gonna talk to the fair board and talk to the commissioner. I'm not sure. Plus, there's a liability aspect to it too. So we're gonna have a business that has already has it covered. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else on that, we can move on. Number four, the Athlee House. I don't know where we are at on that or where Mr. Marla brought on that. Did he ever, did you guys ever send out a letter regarding that?
I think he sent out a letter, um, basically stating that it was a two-week time period or something to that effect, but it's been quite some time now.
I thought he wrote a letter, but he didn't send it.
Send it, right.
And then, but she didn't say where the address was gonna send it to.
I think that's what it was, yeah.
And I don't know if he got the correct address.
And it was something to do with something on the awarding or about the dangerous building ordinance piece of that.
But she does have a power of attorney here in town that maybe we can talk to.
Okay.
I know something is gonna be done, but I just fly on that much.
Okay.
We'll get, we'll.
I'll figure out that information. I can see if I can contact them. I think it was something to do with the code specifically, the language that he wanted in there. And then, but it was just trying to contact her, I think was the issue primarily. Cause as it stands, that house is a, it's not a nuisance, but a problem to do your few things, so.
Um, the next item on is the shooting range lease, and it's the the Sportsman's Club lease that we have. I know you looked over it, and it was sent out to the council. Does any, anyone have any questions or concerns on the lease?
Ma'am, may I bring up something? There is a discrepancy on the lease in dollar amount.
Okay.
At the beginning of the lease is a hundred and ten, and then down at the bottom, when it come renewal, it was a hundred dollars. So I just wanna bring that to your attention.
That would have been my.
It's typo.
So is it? So on number twelve, one ten.
I mean, this is pretty much the same lease that they've been running on, right? Minus the typo?
It's, it's, uh, the ten dollars more than what, what we've been paying. But I think we can come up with ten dollars more. Uh, the lease itself is a little bit simpler than the last one. It's not as long.
I mean, I went through it, and I didn't really see anything that jumped out at me.
Just to clarify, uh, one of my typos in here, we have rental used twice instead of lease, and that should be changed to lease fee. I think that's in the first two or three paragraphs.
There was another one there. Didn't you see that?
Yeah, well, two, I only seen one in the first two top, cause everywhere else is all, it was. I know it's got in here on section four about they can use dirt from the hill above to, to maintain. I was thinking also in one of the leases, it said in there, they're not to, not remove any dirt off the layer because that's the layer over the top of the landfill.
Correct.
So I didn't see that in that wording.
No, well, that's a, a kind of a given as far as we're concerned that you've, we can't dig down where the landfill was, you know, because of the D E Q.
Right.
Issues there. But off of the actual landfill, the hill in the back is where we have used to build safety berms.
Right. Yeah, and just thinking, you know, if this is a ten-year lease, you know, you might not be here, none of us might not be here. And then if that wording needs to kind of be in there, that the ground over the top of the landfill isn't removed, just to make sure that that who's in here after eight years from now, it's like, well, they go down six feet.
We're currently in the process of writing a grant to the Friends of N R A to extend the safety berm to the east. An eighteen-foot tall safety berm is what we wanna put lengthwise on the east side. And then we also wanna do some leveling and grading, which we will have to haul dirt in to do to put a forty-eight-foot canopy in for the hand-drawn shooting range. So we will wanna take more dirt.
Yeah.
Off of that.
Which I don't think that's a problem. I think the issue is on, you know, whatever it seems for D Q and purposes under that is not exposing anything that would have in the landfill area.
And that's where we make sure we aren't penetrating anything down into the landfill. Where the canopies are, we build up in order to, uh, set foundations and stuff into that. But yeah, you're right, that probably would be good wording to have in there for the future.
Future. And just, just to me, I guess, you know, when I look at this as a ten-year, ten-year lease, is just making sure that whoever reads this later is all on the same page as all of us that are here now.
So Councilman, language-wise, um, what would facilitate making sure that that wouldn't happen in the future?
You know what?
Cause it's a certain feat, right?
Right.
They were trying to.
I think any digging or foundation, pillars or flutters, things like that, anything that would go down in that area would have to be approved by the city engineer or city public work person to make sure we're not gonna be digging into the, past the cap of that landfill, I think.
We do have a permission and clearance, uh, section in four.
Correct.
I, I, I get where you're coming from, though it's not, it's just kind of asking basically instead of being specific, so. I guess it depends on what we.
Last section of the, section four has a portion of.
Yeah, we just need to change that. Instead of saying, you know, you know, to come to a source.
Yeah, I, it, however, the club must obtain permission and clearance prior to utilizing this resource by asking the city engineer, the public works commissioner before each and every use. Resourcing the removal of dirt, correct? You could be more specific though on that. We could go into footage, but I think it would probably be, um, prior to actually, the club agrees to ask permission. Prior to.
Excavation work?
Yeah. Permission prior to excavation work.
Maybe something in there that we make the recordings of the D E Q.
Yeah, there is. I did see some stuff in the Act Three that they're talking about.
Yeah.
On eleven A, yeah, that we, uh, Department of, yeah.
Yeah.
Pursuing the rule and regulations, so I did read that piece in there, so.
Club agrees to ask permission prior to excavation work and to comply with all Department of Environmental Quality regulations.
And then I'm good with it.
So once we get the changes made in there, um, we'll get it signed for you, but you wanted to discuss some stuff?
I have just a couple minutes of your time. In current labor, I'm the president for the Western County Sportsman's Club. Uh, as Doug mentioned, we are in the process of working a grant to, uh, do some additional berman work and such out there for the outdoor pistol range. Also looking at, uh, one, repair of a canopy for, uh, wind damage that was done when COVID struck. And also putting the canopy over the actual shooting area for the pistol range. And so for, to do that, we're asking permission to move some dirt from that back hill to use to make those safety berms. And, and also to build up a little bit for the shooting area and level that off so that we can penetrate that area for our canopies and not dig into the actual perimeter or through the surface of the landfill itself. And so, you know, I'd just like to ask for permission to do that. Also, um, we're not asking for money. But some of you have been around long enough to know that we bring quite a bit of money into the community. Our gun show was one of the best gun shows in the state, and we bring in, I've got ninety-six tables. That's all I can get. We don't have a venue large enough to go bigger. I've tried bigger, but didn't have the room for it. So, uh, we bring vendors in from Cheyenne through Casper, Sheridan, Spearfish, Sundance, Rapid, Edgemont. And this last year, we was running like four hundred people a day through the door. So those are all people coming into the community, buying gasoline, spending money at the restaurants, spending the night in motels. Also, the Sportsman's Club hosts four A shooting sports. And we have built that up to where we've got forty-five kids this last year in rifle and over forty in pistol. We've also brought in individuals from Hot Springs, Edgemont area, and the less than beyond for black powder. And so we're starting black powder up on the range. So just to give you a little update, I haven't been here for quite a while, and let you know some of the stuff that's going on at the club.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Um, so since they're gonna be applying for grants, there's probably a lease. So if we could get a motion to pass the lease after the changes have been made.
So.
Maybe we have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Soon as those are changed, we'll get it signed, and Stacy will give you a call.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to department heads, uh, city attorney, double and two.
Madam Mayor, um, so the planning and zoning commission have their two meetings on what sort of language they would like to see in the ordinance as it pertains to planning and zoning. As well as some of the other ordinances that were found throughout the state. We changed the fee, um, from twenty dollars to a hundred dollars. And I think if you keep looking through here, we changed some of the language in regards to coups, as well as the penalty for non-compliance. Um, and then added a, um, a fee for three dollars per day. for the keeping of chickens, and then also changed the violation fee as well. I think there's one more thing in here that was. Councilman Owens, do you remember if there was one more thing in here? Sorry to pick on him, but.
I think you added the applicant has to receive signatures of all the neighbors whose property is within ten feet of the applicant's property boundaries. Which I've had a number of my constituents come to me and say that they don't like the proposed change. I know that it was just a suggestion by the Planning and Zoning Committee that we put that in there. I mean, personally, I would like to move forward with having first reading. But I would like to strike that sentence from the ordinance.
I'm against removing that one because I know in the past I've had to get signatures.
The constituents that spoke with me basically said that you don't have to ask your neighbor's permission to have a dog. So why should you have to ask your neighbor's permission to have a chick, some chickens? Another one was you don't have to, you, you should be able to have the liberty to do what you want on your own property without having to ask your neighbor's permission. I know Councilman Stevenson had to ask permission so that he could get the shot built. On a lot, the city a lot. But I don't really think that that equates to the same animal as, as having a few chickens in your backyard. So I would still make motion that we accept the backyard chicken ordinance, but strike that sentence about the applicant having to receive signatures from the ordinance.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I just want to make it sure that the ones that I've been talking to that has a voice or no, I don't want chickens, so many voices for that.
Thank you.
No, we know.
Okay, so ordinance, what ordinance number six? So ordinance number six, series two thousand twenty-two, and ordinance amending city of Newcastle zoning ordinance number thirteen, series nineteen eighty-five, and providing for an effective date. Be it ordained by the governing body of the city of Newcastle, Western County, Wyoming. Ordinance number thirteen, series nineteen eighty-five is hereby amended as follows. Section six district regulations. Section six C three R one, single-family resident district, subparagraph three is amended to include paragraph three G. The keeping of chickens shall be allowed subject to the following criteria. There's a lot.
I would do each section just so, just so that we know what this feature talking about.
So the first section was six C three R one. The next one is section six D three R two, single and two-family residential district, subparagraph three is amended to include subparagraph three G. The keeping of chickens shall be allowed subject to the following criteria. Section six E two R three, multifamily residential district, subparagraph three is amended to include subparagraph three H. The keeping of chickens shall be allowed subject to the following criteria. Section six F two, M H, mobile home district, subparagraph three is amended to include subparagraph three H. The keeping of chickens shall be allowed subject to following criteria.
Madam Mayor, one other thing I wanted to bring to the council's attention, that is in regard to, I believe it's the tank one easement. We had, our office was contacted by Ogden Driscoll regarding a former offer to purchase land that he owns up around that area. It was my understanding that basically what this would do is it would just allow the city to have easier access to, I think it's tank one, right Greg?
Yes.
And in doing so, what had happened, I think during the conversations between the city, primarily Mike Moore and Ogden was, there were some strenuous things that Ogden wanted regarding the purchase of said land that he now has basically dropped and reinvented his initial offer. So I just wanted to get the council's thoughts on that and whether or not that was something that the council was still interested in pursuing.
And the initial offer did not include water tap, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's just the three thousand dollars you think for the property.
Yeah, I thought it was great until he threw the additional water tap on it.
Yeah, that was a, that changed the whole thing.
And I'm, I'm fine with what we agreed on with that. When Mike was first going through the negotiation back and forth with this negotiated cost.
And I just didn't understand why it took so long. He kept kind of kicking it down the road, and then he asked for a tap, which I thought, I was flabbergasted. But I mean, the fair market value for the land and the, the increased accessibility is all beneficial to the city. So if he is willing to honor the, the original agreement, then I, I think that we should do it.
Yeah, if you would.
Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we would accept the offer of three thousand dollars from Ogden Driscoll for the porcelain, nine-to-five tank wall.
Your second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
That's it, Madam Mayor.
Any question for attorney double news?
Thanks, Colonel.
City clerk treasurer, Stacy Hagerty.
I had emailed everybody some pamphlets and information from job, from the jobs. Information, of course, that was brought to me. I didn't know if anybody would think that it was appropriate to go that avenue for job posting.
I think about every avenue we can search out right now is to get applicants. It's going to be a good way. You know, we don't want to limit ourselves to just the, the few that we've been used to, if we can open the door.
There are prices there on that. For the unlimited, which is pretty much what exactly that unlimited for a year, it is a little bit unspending, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. But that does not, we can have as many words as we want, like for the PB, obviously that type of a job description is huge.
Different job listings.
It is absolutely unlimited.
Post job applicants in the paper, what does that usually run us?
We recently ran an ad for public works, and we did a three colon by four-inch ad, and that was, I believe, a hundred and sixty-two dollars.
We do that several times, you know, and then when you're here, then we, you know, this just opens up another avenue for us to be able to get applications, I think. Which is very slim right now.
What do we got on that? And the other request I have is, as we've done in the past, is to just have the city office closed for Friday after Thanksgiving, which is normally done, and then, of course, we use holiday pay, or I'm sorry, vacation pay, not holiday pay.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
And you'll just make sure it's posted.
Absolutely. And that's all I have.
Any questions for city clerk? Public Works Supervisor Bricksome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Does everybody read the California Department of Environmental Project report? Are there any questions?
I had a couple, Greg. So it says the landfill, we have one full-time employee, which is Jim, right?
Correct.
And then we have five scale attendants. Is that so, our time employee?
Yes, normally we have just two, but we have three others that can fill if necessary.
Okay, I was just curious about that. And then it also says you'd like to increase the full-time staff to fifteen employees.
Yes.
And like, I just didn't know if you had a plan for where you wanted to put those employees.
Primarily streets and water sewers. The recent project we did, we had to hire a contractor to do the dirt work for us, the trenching, the backfill. A few more people we could actually
Do it yourselves?
Take that over ourselves. We do have several projects that we may have done that require big work. And they're three- to four-person jobs. So we either pulled everybody from the streets to help the water sewer, and then several times we ended up pulling the water sewer to help the streets. Just put one more employee in each, each of those two areas to hopefully get back to what we were doing several years ago. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we gave up two physicians. We had fifteen employees at that time. And we were doing the majority of our work ourselves. We allowed two physicians to disappear through attrition, and I'd really like to get those back so we can actually do our work. Nothing against contractors, I'm glad to support and happy to support our local contractors, they do a great job for us. But I would like to get back to doing some more of it.
Understood. And then under sewer, are we trying to, are some people trying to get service to some lots in gray edition off of siege?
That's probably what's going to happen. Currently, we had a, we were working on a plan to expand the system in that direction. It's kind of fallen by the wayside in the past months. We may need to look at doing something sooner rather than that. And extending our sewer down that direction. Originally, it was part of a larger project that was going to include tying this, a school district to other residences in the city that are currently on solid gray guard district back into the city. And then expand it into that unapproved section, say, to service those, those lots. We have not moved forward with any type of plans or anything like that. I guess I'm looking for advice from the council on if you want to move forward with getting plans drawn up for that and getting engineering done. So if we do end up adding service to lots, we at least have a plan in place and permit the construction.
I mean, I think any expansion is good and, and improving lots and getting homes and some more folks paying taxes, that that would be a positive thing. So I would be for the improvement of land and, and getting the engineering.
And what the plans and how to know if the extension of the sewer, if it's in the same area, I'm, I'm aware of. They had to look at that to make sure that by the time they got to gray, it wasn't had enough fill over the top of them because it was, wasn't going to be very far from the surface once they got grayed. Yes, and if we go the route we were looking at, I believe there's at least four feet of cover remains. The way they put it in through the easement, through the unapproved utility alley between gray and sage, they did not make it, they did not create a toward it to get it usable in these lots. We were actually looking, by going the other direction towards tough avenue and then going back towards list section. But we couldn't make green with everything there.
Do we need a motion for that, or are we just tell Greg to go and get the engineering done?
Engineering done, see what we need, what it's going to take, not a problem.
And then my final question was for the speed limit sign missing on Morrissey Road. I, I was to understand that the county had annexed Morrissey Road. Wasn't that the camp, didn't the county take ownership of Morrissey Road? Or is that still ours?
No.
So the county needs to put up the sign, or is that still on?
I, we do a lot of maintenance on.
Other signs and so.
It's not a big deal for us to put a sign back up.
Okay.
It's, the council's vicious as to whether we, we did it or not. I don't have a problem doing it. It's really not a large expenditure talking. Two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars probably to where Stephen would sign up on it.
Well, and then that road still serves our residents and.
It serves several.
I would still send an email to the county.
You can.
I mean, I don't want it to stir up any trouble, though. You have two hundred and fifty bucks for the worth of the fight. Oh, and then on the public works report of projects, I just wanted to throw something out there about, I don't even know if this, I'm just spitballing here. But it says that we, you know, down under the landfill number two closing, letter E, we reached our maximum limit of tires, and we have to either bury some or pay to recycle them. And we'll have to truck the tires either Minnesota or Utah. I mean, is there, is there any way to, to utilize rail? Can the, can the railroad haul some of those tires for us and maybe it wouldn't cost as much? I mean, I, I didn't know if there was a way to, like I said, I'm just spitballing here.
I have no idea. I've never driven the railroad.
I mean, when they're sending a, a coal train out, you could have a couple extra cars. I, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out a way we can save some money and, and then maybe utilize a, you know, a different form of transportation because all the truckloads of tires to Utah seems nice if you, or Minnesota, it seems like a deal expensive.
Yeah, when we looked at it, it was, it was going to be cheap. With our current landfill situation, yeah, we're, we're getting in a bad situation.
It's getting bad, isn't it?
We do have a meeting with Craig and Colleen to discuss options. Not only the current landfill, but taking.
Yeah.
That's this Thursday.
Um, and then, I mean, I paid my taxes today for my county, or property in the county, and I'm still paying on the solid waste district. So I just didn't, I haven't heard much about where they're at, but it seems like we're still a couple years out.
That's a year. Craig and Colleen will have more insight when the mayor and I meet with Mayor Bissell.
Okay. Thank you for asking that.
Probably report more after that soon.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
The other questions? I've got a couple other things to bring up, and Wyatt Ivy has passed a CDL as well as re. Wyatt Ivy has passed his CDL as well as Reese Childers. They both completed their entry level driver training. Wyatt received his CDL October twenty-eighth and Reese received his November fourth. I'd like to ask the council to award these two employees a raise for gaining their CDL.
I would move that Wyatt Ivy received his, is it still fifty cent raise?
Yes, fifty cent raise.
For receiving a CDL and backdated to the twenty-eighth of October. And then what was the other employee's name?
Reese Childers.
Uh, I would move that Reese Childers received his fifty cent raise and backdated to November fourth. Yep.
Do we have a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
The other one is the South Summit water main replacement. Currently, we have a permit to construct. We have a plan finished. We are actually ready to open it. The monies we did not receive from the grants, the art fund grants, we can now utilize the match grant to go into use of those to complete this project. Engineer's estimate was three hundred and five thousand dollars for this project. And I would request that we go to bed with this South Summit Cedar and Oak Street water main. This water main is broken ten times in, in one area alone. We've had four other main routes in this section by down Cedar. It's, it's over, it's time to be replaced. This land was probably put into service, I'm guessing, around nineteen fifty-five.
Mr. Johnson has been very patient.
Mr. Johnson has been very polite.
Mr. Johnson's a saint. I've been on that break a few times myself and I, I think he's had to contend with that one enough.
My goal is to get on the contractors' lists early spring and summer to get this land replaced as early as possible. This one's definitely overdue for, for replacement.
I move that we look at bids for the South Summit Oak Street Water Main Replacement. Second.
Do we have a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Anything else?
Uh, just the two positions. As I stated, we'd like to increase our staff by two. Currently, we're thirteen, or twelve. We have a gentleman that we're live interviewing, doing background checks on him, stuff like that. That would put us at thirteen, but I still would like to be able to hire two more employees, full-time employees.
Will they be cross-trained or will they just be specific areas?
Everybody in our shop is cross-trained. Apparently, personally, primarily working with the cemetery is working on the first happening project, learning how to work on water, water mains and water circuits and installing and stuff like that, so.
City clerk said that we'll just have to watch.
And they'll slowly start taking, hopefully taking some of the contractor pay, or that we're having paid out, absorbing into wages.
Do we have a motion to raise on thirteen to fifteen?
I would make a motion that we would increase position at the shop in thirteen to fifteen.
One second.
Do we have a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Works? Um, so for the police department, for October, two hundred and forty calls pulled for the year to date is two thousand three hundred and fifteen, fifty eight of the hours of employment. The rest of the information, well, Chief Charles, what is it, he and I talked today again and he's looking at his first day being December fifth. So you will have new chief for December fifth. So I talked with him, I'm going to get further information on this, I think my email started. So we can start communicating and he can be up to date of where we're at and, and then any applicants we give. And all the other information I have will be in personnel and contracts on the executive session. Standing committee reports, I would like to try to communicate with the personnel committee. McBarren, now in Lance, to be either an administrative assistant or, or grant writer or a physician. And, sorry, can you send me the name of that one gentleman who possibly helped us with engineering until we?
Sheriff Martin, so to speak. Spoke with him, he said he would help us here. He said forty dollars a hour is what he charged.
So that's something we can think about to utilize, to help with those larger projects that we're in the process of, is that something we want to have?
So just to be clear, Madam, the, the personnel committee be needing to discuss whether we are going to adopt a town administrator or a grant writer to fit the bill?
Um, correct. Something to that factor. I have quite a bit of surrounding areas of job descriptions and those kind of things that we would have to look at until you can figure out, you're probably a person. But that's all I have. Any other standing committees or?
I have a question on the police side.
Okay, is it something that's going to be in executive session or is it personnel?
Shouldn't be, I don't think. We have an executive session? We are?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just regarding personnel. Can we talk about that?
Well, yep, yep.
Any other personnel?
I'd like to throw something out there. It got a little bit heated with the, with the Chamber of Commerce. I was trying to come up with solutions where Barbie would be able to kind of show what she's doing for work and not have to sit in the chamber if that doesn't work. I was trying to find a better way for her to be able to document her experience so that we could see what was happening because we don't get to hear what's going on. Go ahead.
I've got a suggestion too. The, in order to receive funding from the travel commission, they do ask for a quarterly report and that, that entails what was accomplished that quarter and the goals for the next quarter.
Yeah.
Is that something that maybe we could times two and share with the city?
I mean, that would keep everybody informed and then maybe we wouldn't be getting our facts from concerned citizens. We'd actually be able to see something tangible in our hands.
And we might be able to say, oh, well, we have something to tell them that besides, well, we'll talk to the chamber.
It's another communication thing, you know? Like she got upset and she left. I mean, I was just trying to come up with a way that, yeah, if we get a concerned citizen, hey, Barbie met with all these folks down here and she was doing something, you know, if you want to get ahold of her, she's linked up with her phone, just call the chambers number, you know, we have something to say, you know? So I, I didn't like that I upset everybody, but it did get a little bit heated there and I just told Barbie, you know?
Um, any other questions? Then I would ask for a motion to re-regular session to go into executive session.
So, please.
Do we have a motion in second? Any further discussion?
What is the paragraph under which the executive session is going to be done? The purpose?
It's Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five.
Thank you. Which paragraph?
I don't know.
It'd be under personnel.
Yeah.
I don't remember exactly what subsection is off the top of my head.
I think that's I, I, or I, I, I.
Yeah, it's like A, I, I.
Sound like the ones in Navy folks right here or something, lots of I's.
I have to follow certain things with my job.
Do you have a question?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Michael Lane. The lights on Pine Street, sometimes they come on, sometimes they don't. And then on the railway, those lights don't light up.
The ones on the brown hole?
Yeah.
Okay, so Pine Street and what was the other?
Railway, I think it's called.
Railway?
And then down past the, uh, Datters?
Carter.
Yeah.
Carter?
Yeah.
Carter Road.
And they're not turning on?
No.
I can send an email to Black Hills Power and they'll come out and take a look at them.
Okay, you can give them a call.
I can email them for you to that.
Okay.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Oh, you're welcome. Very welcome.
So we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll be going into executive session at eight forty-two.